We'll now call the Village Board Meeting to order. It's July 28, 2014. This is meeting number 3,078. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy.
President.
Kim Meyer Semple.
Here.
Sullivan Voss.
Here.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It's great to have a great crowd here. Lots of good things on the agenda here tonight. First order of business here is approval of minutes. I need a motion to pass the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from July 14.
Hello.
Second. Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Village Board Meeting from July 14, Exhibit 2. I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this point in the evening is the time when we would have public commentary. Does anyone present tonight wish to address the board at the podium there? Okay. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, someone over here, 6. Okay. Let me, okay, let's just, okay, let me ask you this. How many are here, of you six, how many are here to address the dispensary, the medical marijuana dispensary? Okay, just two. Okay, good. Then we'll mix it up. So if we can have the other three go first and then you two go after that, and then we'll take on that topic at the end, okay? So who over here was gonna go? Okay, sir, right there with the paper. That'd be great. And just give your name to the clerk, and I think the mic operates well there.
Bruce Arnt, 248 North Archer, right across the street. Remember, I was here a couple of meetings ago. Had a little bit of an issue with not allowing us to park in front of our own homes during the day. I understand that's up for a vote tonight to allow us to park with permit. I just wanted to say thank you. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Next. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Do you want my name and address?
Please.
Okay. Cherie Martin, 214 North Fairlawn Avenue, Mundaline, Illinois. And I'm here in regards to the taxi situation from Mundaline that I've been dealing with for quite some time. And it has come to my attention that the only people that I feel safe with are not going to be able to service me. And I would like to bring to this board's attention two issues. And one is with American Taxi. But before we get to those issues, I am going to state one thing, that you feel that you give licenses out here? Do you know how many times from American Taxi and ABC and 303 that I was told that I better get a car number? Then I better go get an ID from the guy? Because they're just not sure who's driving their cab! Now, another time with American Taxi, and I'm going to state it here, I was going to come to you in private, but obviously the world decided I should come say this in public. I had a Mexican, and I do not take this against any Mexicans, okay? But to make my point, my credit card has a German name on it. I was at my home. They picked me up. And he wanted, he literally tried to take my card away from me. And I made him, "Oh, I'm being really." And I made him drive back to my house. And he told me to get out of his car, that it was his credit card, that was his house, and he was the guy that I'd been living with for I don't know how many years now. Because you know why? For some damn reason in this town, they can say whatever they want. Because if they call you, well, I have to say it don't seem to matter. "Oh, but they won't come to my house to pick me up because they don't want to admit what happened." "Oh, but they'll pick me up anywhere else and use my credit card." And you better damn believe security's watching it at every point in time. And I'm not getting in an American Taxi. I'm not getting in 303. Maybe 303, they pretty much know not to cross my path. But I am tired of these people and their jobs. These taxiing people. Chad and Tony appreciate their job. They don't treat me like somehow, since I'm paying them to take me somewhere, whatever, I don't know. It's their damn problem. But if they don't like their job, I suggest they get out of it. And when you want, I would not talk about moral perpetuity in Mundaline Police Department. Because maybe you might want me to say something in public, they should be probably be cut for the courts.
Okay, ma'am, are you, so you would like us to acknowledge a complaint you have against this taxi company?
No.
Is that what you're here for?
I want them to drive. You are trying to take their license away from them.
Okay.
And I've been using them for four years. I've known them for 10 years. I am not, that's why they're here.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand what you're complaining, that we are trying to take their license away.
Well, you should know what goes on in your town. Yes, you are. You are denying Chad and Tony a license. Two people that I feel safe with. When I call ACR Cabs, I know who's coming to my home. Now, I suggest you do your job, because I want to tell you one thing here. I don't know a few of the names here, and I do vote. But I'll tell you something. It's nice to put a face to every name, because sometimes luck must be the only thing keeping you in a job.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And who's next over here? Okay, sir, right here, please.
I'm Maynard Kavak. I live at 3380 Rockwell Circle in Del Webb Grand Dominion. First, I want to thank various Village Departments for the help and cooperation that I've received working through several issues: Public Works, the Building Department, and Engineering. I'm here to make the Village aware of a safety issue in my neighborhood that directly affects around 20 homes. There are two retaining walls at the back of these properties that range in height from a couple of feet to over eight feet. For the entire length of the walls, there are no barriers to prevent someone from falling. Furthermore, the grade near the wall, in many places, is as steep as 1 to 1. Most of these backyards are very shallow. Mine is 25 feet at the maximum, with only 12 feet being flat, and this makes many of the yards unsafe. There are other retaining walls in our development, and for most of them where the backyards are shallow, Pulte, the developer, has erected split rail fences as a barrier. When we did our final walkthrough prior to closing, I asked at what point will we get our fence? At that time, there were many vacant lots. I was told by Pulte that there would not be a fence, since the Village had changed the code requiring a barrier. As it turns out, there never was a code requiring a barrier under these circumstances. I have a copy of the landscaping plan Pulte drew in 2006 that shows a fence on both walls. I was told that the builder has the right to make changes to the plan as they see fit without Village oversight. We are concerned about walking close to the wall and are worried about anyone, such as landscapers and workmen, getting too close. These backyards are off limits to grandchildren and pets, but as you know, no matter what degree of diligence, pets and children can get away, and all it takes is a minute. The pet of one of my neighbors has already been injured. These homeowners are working with the neighborhood reps and the Homeowners' Association to mitigate the problem by petitioning to erect a fence that would provide a degree of safety. So you're probably wondering, then, why I'm here making this presentation. I'm really not expecting the board or the Village Department to take any action on our behalf to eliminate the dangerous condition. I'm here to make the Village aware that it may have some liability. And if there's an accident and somebody gets injured. I've spoken with builders, contractors, and attorneys about this issue, and they're all very surprised that the Village has allowed this condition to exist, especially in a community where the residents might not be quite as agile as younger people. I had discussed the grade issue with the Engineering Department, and I was told that the Village had requested a 6 to 1 maximum grade. But Pulte said it required a 4 to 1 grade in order to build the number of planned units. The specified grades, I understand, is a guideline, not a code or a regulation. Regardless, there are grades as steep as 1 to 1 in these backyards. The Building Department confirmed that no barrier is required. So this dangerous condition actually does not violate any Village code. I was told by a Village official that there are no departments that would have jurisdiction in this case, since the walls are on private property and are now owned by the homeowners. I would like to point out that if a resident has a deck of a certain height, the Village requires a railing, and there is a requirement to have handrails on stairways coming down from decks. I really don't understand why this is any different. Maybe going forward, the Village should consider adopting a code or a regulation so this problem is not repeated. I have been worried that if someone does fall and gets injured, I'm liable and can be sued. This would include someone in my backyard whom I did not invite, a workman, an inspector, or even a burglar. If someone does get injured, you can be assured that they will sue the homeowner and anyone else who may be culpable. That includes the Homeowners' Association, the builder, and the Village. The Village, because there are no regulations preventing this dangerous condition, a lawsuit would go after the perceived deepest pockets first, the builder and the Village. I hope at least that this makes the Village attorney aware of what can happen. I brought a few pictures, if anyone's interested in seeing them, but they don't convey the degree of danger that exists. I welcome anyone who wants the experience that we face every day to come and visit, but please be very careful near the wall. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, sir, could you spell your last name, please?
Sure. K-A-B, as in boy, A-K.
Thank you. Next, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm Clayton Calway, the Director of Facilities from the University of St. Mary of the Lake Mundaline Seminary. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to speak here in the brand-new Village Hall. I'm coming representing one of the oldest structures in the town here, and being in one of the newest ones, it's a great opportunity. With that being said, we're working on our infrastructure to modernize some of our systems there. One of the things we really want to modernize is our potable water, which we currently get from a well, and we have a water tower in our system on campus as original. I've already been in discussions with Adam Boucher, the Director of Public Works and Engineering, to determine the feasibility of us going on to city water permanently. And we already have the system in place. The pipes were already put in, the isolation valves were done years ago. We do go on city water on occasion for emergencies, or if we're doing system maintenance or cleaning our water tower. So we are set for that. We'd really just desire to have clean, treated water. We do have safe water that we test regularly. We report to the Illinois EPA. But our water is hard, and it's really hard to work with on our equipment, from our mechanical equipment, kitchen equipment, our laundry services. So we'd really like to go on after 90 years, permanent city water. As I said, our system is modern. It's metered. It's already set up by the Village in Mundaline. We do pay the minimum bills. It was upgraded when we put in some of our sprinkler systems. So again, the water is there. I'm here to ask the board tonight for a reduced rate based on our usage. We use over 17 million gallons of water a year. We record that from our well. As you're aware, we're also a charitable, non-for-profit education and religious institution. We've always been very active in the community here, and we're trying to increase that in the years to come. Since I've started this role here as the Director of Facilities, I've become a council member for the Bull Creek Watershed. We hosted the first meeting on our campus just a couple of months ago, and it was a public meeting that anybody was able to come to. We've hosted many community events, walkathons every year. We work closely with the Department of Natural Resources. Just a couple of weeks ago, we hosted the Mundaline Cops and Bobbers Fishing Derby for the community. It was a great success, and they've already asked to be invited back next year. A couple of weeks, we're going to be hosting the Second Annual Catholic Family Picnic Day. And our involvement in the community has been very strong. We're committed to that. Our feasibility analysis for this began before you guys increased the rates back in May that took effect June 1st. So when we did that, we were basing off the prior rate, and our feasibility was that we were kind of at the break-even to make the decision to go on to city water. So what we're asking is a 10% discount of the current rate, which would bring it down to $3.90 for water only, and that would include the Jawa rate that's fixed that you guys pay. At this rate, the City of Mundaline would stand to increase their budgetary income by about $44,000 a year that you're not making now. So nothing would need to be done. The infrastructure's already there. So there's no further work that would need to be completed, other than us just turning out a valve, which we do on occasion. So I hope this is something that you guys can consider, and that it would be a win-win situation for both the university and the city. So thank you for the opportunity, and I hope we can work something out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Ed. Excuse me. I know that you've been in conversations with Mr. Boucher, and I think for the board to consider something, it might be appropriate to get something in writing specifically to the request that you made verbally tonight.
Okay. I can do that.
And so that would be helpful to move things forward.
Sure, I can do that. I'll prepare a memo with all the information and our usage. Okay, thank you.
Who's next? Did we have those two? Okay, ma'am.
Aurelia Spicuzzo, 300 Anthony Avenue, which is the Cardinal Square condominiums. So I just wanted to say big thank you for the community days. They were spectacular. Loved them. And the fireworks were spectacular, so thank you, Mundaline, for footing that bill for us. I truly appreciate it. My condo faces right over Public's work, so I have a spectacular view. The only comment I would make is, for the parade, I always kind of sit in front of the post office for the parade on Sunday, and people picnic and kind of tailgate, and there's always a lot of litter, and they fill that garbage can to capacity. I was wondering if the Village would consider maybe putting out more garbage cans for the parade, just as a thought. It looks unsightly when the parade is over, and then, I don't know when the city crews come in, who do a bang-up job, by the way, of taking down everything at Santa Maria over there. But I just thought, you know, if you have visitors driving through town after that, it looks like we had a riot in town. Because people really do try to put their garbage away, but there's nowhere for it to go. And it's really cool to see people picnicking and tailgating and strollers and wagons and so on. The second item, off-topic, is that Locknut, the corporation that's right there, that's kind of empty and for sale, no one plows that in the winter. And I take the train off into the city on Friday, and is that something I should do?
No.
Okay, okay. I just wondered if we can ask someone from Locknut, maybe if they need someone to come in and plow that snow for us. We have to walk in Holly to go from the condo. The city, I think, has been plowing the path that's the Village property, but they stop because it's not their property to do locknut. And then the post office does theirs, and then we have that huge swath. I can't get, it's hard to get to the train. I have to walk on Holly Street. So two little things. Thank you, though, for the community days. They were excellent. Loved them.
Are you talking about the public sidewalk?
Yes, in front of Locknut. So public.
On Holly Street.
On Holly. So I don't know if it's Locknut's responsibility, or it's the city's, but it's not plowed or shoveled. But you have been doing it up to that fence on that side, on the west side over there. So it was just a thought to help us get to the train station. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm sorry, could I get your name again?
Sure, and you probably want me to spell that, don't you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Aurelia, A-U-R-E-L-I-A.
Okay.
And Spicuzzo, S like Sam, P like Peter, I-C-U-Z-Z, zebra, zebra, A.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else ready for the final two there? Okay, very good.
Hi, my name's Katie Henning. I live at 121 South Emerald here in Mundaline. So I'm here tonight to talk really about three things. The first one is the $150, $50,000 parking lot. The second one is the annexation of Grayslake Mundaline Trucking Facility. And the third one is the tax amendments to the medical marijuana facility. First, the parking lot. It is my belief that spending $150,000 on a torn-up parking lot was not in the best interest of this village. We say we are pro-business, and we want businesses to open downtown so we can revitalize the area and ultimately collect tax revenue. We had an opportunity to spend $150,000 to do just that, incent businesses to open downtown. Rather, I strongly believe other considerations came into play and took us off track of our strategic plan. Specifically, the seller, a member of a different Village Board, was in a bind. The lot was in pre-foreclosure. And Park Street made several appearances before this board to encourage the Village to purchase the lot on their behalf, in my opinion. We all know that Maury's has parking issues, and they are closer to the new town hall. Does this mean that we'll be in the business of buying lots for everyone? Finally, just as a side note, if this property was zoned M-1 or M-M-U, the new off-street parking would have been required a special-use permit. I find the overall transaction questionable and not in the best interest of bringing a new business to Mundaline, its residents, or our ability to generate more tax revenue. Do I just continue to the next point? Okay. The next one is the annexation of Grayslake Trucking Facility. You know, it's clear that Mundaline really wants this property, and we didn't take steps to, my question is, why didn't we take steps to annex this property into Mundaline before Grayslake had the opportunity handed to them? I understand that we built a sewer infrastructure, and maybe have spent somewhere between $34 million on it to support growth in this area, yet it seems we didn't have all our ducks in a row. And now we have lots of sewers, but no business to support our taxes to collect. What bothers me, too, is why would Mundaline send uniformed police officers to hand-deliver invites to 50 selected residents, inviting them to attend a meeting with the mayor and a Lake County rep? Why not post a public notice of the meeting and invite all residents? How is this issue different than others affecting businesses and residents in the town? Did a uniformed police officer also deliver notes to the folks across the street, giving them updates on their parking situation? You know, I would totally, would rather have police officers policing our town and keeping us safe, rather than making house calls to my neighbors on selected topics. It's a fact that residents and businesses are not notified, certainly not by a personal invite from a uniformed police officer, on all topics impacting them. Which brings me to my final point. And I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous. I'm like shaking. Okay, first, I'm glad we were really the first resident to talk about this. I'm also a business owner. To speak about this topic in any business forum, it concerns me that prior to today, the only voice heard from the public was a non-Mundaline resident who represented the business who would like to open a facility. I would suggest to each and every person on the board to have not one resident or business in our community speak on this topic should have been a red flag. No one in town knew that this was being voted on. Not one business surrounding the two proposed locations knew about this. This impacts Britain Hills residents as well, and after talking to them today, not one of them knew about it either. Why is that? Well, we say we're pro-business, value the opinions of residents, and play nice with other towns, but the actuality, on this topic, we did not. When the business that wants to open a facility says, "Don't have a special-use permit because it will invite a public circus," our board agrees, implying that Mundaline residents and businesses are simply clowns who should not be given the voice of voice. That bothers me, and it should bother each and every one of you. I'm using this as an opportunity to demand a public hearing on this topic, where the Village notifies residents and businesses and collectively brings forward the best solution for our village. Just two follow-up points. Was the public notified? I would say no. Surrounding businesses were not notified. I personally spoke to all the surrounding businesses on the both locations today, delivering, hand-delivering, not in a uniform, hand-delivering upon notice, letting them know about this issue. Only one business knew about the topic, but had no idea it would be located right out their back door. Businesses like Carstar, PK Bennett, Mambo Italiano seem surprised that they would be down the street or open their back door to a medical marijuana facility every day, from 8 to 6, Monday through Fri, Monday through Sunday. I hate to say it, but the Village's lack of notice to them nor an invite to discuss how this decision might affect their business, their revenues, their employees, clients and customers, is a big issue. Just today, I encouraged them to sign a petition and contact you all directly. Interestingly, one business said that they wanted to stay out of it, and I asked why. And they told me that it was obviously a corrupt decision, and they didn't want their name printed anywhere, to have the Village, to have the Village come after them. That was their point of view. Overall, this decision not to hold a public hearing and notify surrounding businesses is not pro-business. The Village has jeopardized existing businesses for a mere $100,000 in revenue. Secondly, Latino residents were not notified. All of our public notices are posted, were posted on agenda items and minutes on our website. With over 30% of our residents who are Latino, and according to the Village's website, 23.2% speak a language other than English at home, the Village missed an important notification step. Could it be because although they represent a third of our community, only 7% are registered voters? I would hope not. I'm sure it's not. I don't think it's right to exclude such a large group, and would hope that the Village in future communications would translate them to Spanish and also include the agenda packet. We institute English and Spanish notices in schools, so we don't leave students, to support students, we don't leave any kid behind. I would suggest we do the same for our residents, and would not want to leave any resident behind because of a language barrier. Residents were not notified. I found this topic since last year. It's been extremely unclear where the process, where in the process we were, and what, if anything, we could do on the topic. Since the public does not get access to the board agenda packets, we rely on going to the meetings, publish agendas, meetings, and attachments. I do not think a cryptic listing in a meeting agenda or minutes makes the cut. Tax amendments to PZC 042014, with meeting notes that say that this has been tabled and will continue at 6, gives everyone the impression that it's tabled till August 6. But then, during the week of 4th of July, a new case is introduced, and then a vote is taken on July 14, where the commission makes a recommendation for a special-use permit, and the board rejects it. I just think we were out of step, and I think the public deserves the right to hear about this. One trustee even told me that four public hearings took place. Once again, not one resident or business attended any meeting. She said, "The reason the press didn't publish the notice of the meeting is because it wasn't newsworthy." I would think having a medical marijuana facility in our town is quite newsworthy, and I would strongly disagree. Although it's not deemed, it's not mandated by the state that you need to provide public notice and make sure it makes the paper for this type of topic, because it's a tax amendment to a previously approved ordinance, I think it would have been smart, at least the very least, to put this topic in the Village newsletter. Finally, my whole, I'm not against medical marijuana. I'm against the facilities chosen and zoned for medical marijuana here in town. And it ties back to a couple things, a couple key things. Setbacks. So the zoning commission recommended we reject the Lake County recommendation setbacks due to the available M1 and M1, or MIU, when you inventory. They said the Lake County recommendation of 30 feet would apply only to new construction, not existing buildings, due to inventory of those facilities. So I went to the Wilhelm property today. The setback is close to zero feet to the property line of families. So here's a building, here's a fence. So, here's a building, here's a fence, here's a kid standing by the patio door window in a onesie looking over us, literally, a little boy, blue onesie. I realized that they're Vernon Hill residents and not Mundaline residents. This baby and their family will overlook a medical marijuana facility. It will impact the quality of life and could impact their property values and safety of their home. They were never notified and that's not fair. That's not being a good neighbor. Multi-use. The Wilhelm property, again, is multi-use. It's very difficult, according to the police, that it's to supervise those areas, and I would recommend we don't have a multi-use property. Hours of operation, being, what we need to do and what the state has told us to do to make reasonable accommodations, these things, I think the changes that we've made are not reasonable, I think they're extreme. Hours of operation, being open Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seems a little excessive and seems like an overburden on our police force to police the area and respond to complaints, including holidays and Christmas and Easter. I think it's being really strict. Security, I believe that the additional security expense should be paid by the business. I think an armed guard would make a significant difference in crime and prevent multiple calls to our police. The business owners should bear the cost. That's not unreasonable, given excessive amounts of cash, drugs, that will be on-site. Revenue, I'm not sure, I haven't seen anything about, you know, $100,000 in revenue, what the cost is to, additional costs to support that $100,000, or the lost cost because surrounding businesses are moving out of town. I realize we need to offer facilities, I'm not sure if this is, these are the right ones. So, in conclusion, wrapping this up, sorry. The medical marijuana facility should be a special-use permit similar to off-street parking lots, parking structures. A medical marijuana facility is not a CVS or Walgreens, it's a cash-based drug business that could hit the pockets of local businesses, affect the safety and security of families, jeopardize future business growth, and make residents mad for being treated like their opinions don't count. The village has an obligation to fill in the facts, actively promote, host and be receptive to public comments. Please let the residents and business have a voice. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to a few things. First of all, Katie, I applaud your right to speak your mind and you've done plenty of it all over the community, but let's get some facts straight. We, the board has discussed this matter twice, both of them at public meetings, open to the public, where people could give their opinion. It was in the paper last spring. You knew last spring, you knew, because you posted it, you...
Right, you're absolutely right.
Last spring, that we were debating this. You encouraged people to come last spring. The board discussed it twice, the plan commission discussed it twice. I was at both of their meetings, I was at both of our meetings, and no one from the public came. You think no one from the public came because somehow we had a larger obligation on this particular matter to notify people in some other way and larger way than we normally do. We think that nobody came because, aside from you perhaps, not many people really cared. But what you're suggesting is that we, the board, should determine what it is that requires more notice and notice people somehow separately of things that we think might have greater bearing, which isn't really what our role is. We need to notice everything the same. The meeting that you referred to about the Grayslake annexation, those people were notified differently because Grayslake notified them. Grayslake didn't notify all of Mundaline. Grayslake, I think it was a legal requirement, they had to, you want to fill in on that part? I'm just going to speak to the medical marijuana part. So, you've said a few things that we should notice Vernon Hills residents, that we have an obligation somehow to notice Vernon Hills residents have things going on in Mundaline in some manner other than how all communities do it, which is publishing. And it's on you, the resident, if there's a matter that comes before this board that is of particular interest to a resident, there's some responsibility on your part that you must follow it and you must know. You can't really put it, the obligation, on this board to determine what is of interest to which residents and how we should notify them, because then we're going to notice people differently and you are setting us up for a lawsuit then. So, again, we've had four public meetings, the matter has been decided, and now, now that we've voted on it and it has been decided, now you have chosen to come before us and to place allegations and accuse us of somehow lacking in something that we did. I would argue that you have known about it since last spring and it was on you to share your opinions with us prior to us voting. Was it something that you considered critical? So, at this point, while I appreciate you sharing your point of view, I guess I would encourage all residents, if there's a point of interest, that it's on you to follow it and it's on you to make sure that you notify the board as to how you feel about this issue prior to a vote and not wait till after the vote. I don't, there's a lot of factually inappropriate things that you've stated and I'm not going to go through them one by one. I would just encourage you, Katie, if you're going to continue to, with this crusade, that you take the time to talk to the mayor, talk to me, talk to staff, and make sure that what you're fighting, you're doing it factually correctly from here on in. So, if you want to talk about the other...
Okay. The matter of Grayslake annexation, there were 50 residents, well, first of all, our attorneys thought it would be a good idea for us to have a meeting, an informational meeting for those residents who received a notice from Grayslake that, inviting them to an annexation hearing, I think is what they had up there, at their plan and zoning commission. So, it was advised to us to have a meeting and give out good information so we could clear that up. And so, that's what we did. And yes, the invitations were hand-delivered by uniformed officers. We wanted to get it out there. It was a very quick decision and we got it out there and had the meeting. Now, you also said that why didn't we make efforts to annex the land up there? The land is too large to forcefully annex it. It has to come from the owner that requests to be annexed. And so, there's nothing we can do on a property like that in that situation to annex them unless they come to us. And so, the option of forcefully annexing them was not even on the table. So, that clears those two things out.
Fair enough. And the parking lot?
The parking lot. Well, the offer's out. What would, your, let me look at my notes.
I'd just like to better understand how it fits in within our long-term strategic plan revitalizing downtown business growth.
Okay. That lot is in a place that, first of all, we have events, Park on Park being one of them. It does provide parking to surrounding businesses, not just one restaurant. It also is a piece that we're hoping one day to be redeveloped. And so, the majority of the board thought it was appropriate to put in an offer because of those three factors, redevelopment and having control of the property for redevelopment purposes, providing interim parking, parking in the interim would be a good use for a land that we want redeveloped one day, and also for the events. And, yeah, I mean, it's a little, looking a little worn, but, you know, to acquire a property for that price that's already paved and serving as a parking lot is a pretty good deal. And keep in mind, it's an asset to the, you know, it's not like we're just paying money and it's gone forever. It's an asset that we hold, just like any other asset, money, real estate or whatever. It's an asset that's on the books. So, that's why the decision was made and the offer's still out. We're waiting to hear a response, but that's kind of where the status is on that.
You know, Terry, just going back to you just for a second, and has the state issued their final amendments to the regulation for medical marijuana facilities?
No, I think it's due in September. We had to have ours in place prior to theirs. We can always go back and amend ours, but if we don't have ours in place prior to theirs, then we've lost some ability of control.
We've lost ability for control because we don't know what the final amendments are, so we might be amending them again, to your point. So, I don't see that anything has been decided.
Well, a lot of things have been decided. We might have to make some future change based on some unforeseen and unsuspected, at this point, thing that the state could do. But if we don't have something in place and the state permits it, then we haven't established any ground of zoning on where it can go. We would be doing a disservice to our residents. Again, I'd be happy to continue this when we don't have a lot of other people waiting for their turn, but I think that we have discussed it, this topic, pretty well here. And again, you're the first person and only person who has had a problem with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Over here, there we go.
So, I'm Josh Hogan, 1412 Eddington Lane in Mundaline. So, I'm here on behalf of compassionate citizens of Mundaline, and we would like to applaud the board for making the forward-thinking decision to allow a medical cannabis facility at permitted use. We believe this will increase the chances of becoming one of the few dispensaries allowed in Lake County and demonstrate that we're a community that cares. Additionally, the potential sales tax revenue will significantly help our town. We appreciate the board's time and willingness to make a rational and educated decision and hope they'll continue to have, to make forward-thinking decisions with regards to our town's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so we'll close the floor for public commentary and move on to presentations and awards. We are very fortunate tonight to have our new 2014 Mundaline Queens. And so, we would like to have, ask them to come on up and if, one at a time, if you could introduce yourselves, maybe turn and look at the camera and address the folks, that would be wonderful.
Okay, hi, I'm Molly Shutter, I'm the new Miss Mundaline. I'm really excited to be able to represent Mundaline for this year. It's already been such an honor and it's only been a month. If you guys ever hear about any events that we can attend and represent, let our director know, she's here today. Yeah, we're just really excited to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name's Olivia Gonzalez and I'm the new junior Miss Mundaline. And like Molly said, I'm so excited for this year, it's such an honor and I'm very grateful to have the privilege to be here today, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Bolañas and I'm the new Miss Mundaline 2014 and thank you for inviting me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming by. Okay, next, we have, wanted just to announce and ask Chief Gunther to expound on this a bit. Our Mundaline Explorer Post placed third in the 2014 National Explorer Post Competition. And if those folks are here, Ryan Powers, where are you? Are you here? There we go. Justin Honig, Jonathan Mendez and Megan Smith. Chief, if you want to, go ahead and bring that up, that's just, that's awesome. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in way of introduction, the explorers and their two advisors, Officer Gaglowski and Officer Witt, this was their first opportunity to go to the national competition, which was held in Bloomington, Indiana. And to kind of bring it to perspective for you, there was over 108 teams that participated in this event with over 2,000 participants, including explorers from New York Police Department, explorers from Miami Police Department, even as far as Puerto Rico. And these gentlemen and miss were the only ones from Illinois to place. So, I'd like Tony or Rick to just give you just a real brief explanation of what they placed in and what the competition was.
Basically, at this competition, it was a very steep competition, like the chief said. There's organizations from all over the United States coming to it. This particular event, each team did three competitions, that was it for their team. And in this one, they placed 99 of a possible 100 points, so extremely excellent. At the debriefing, they bring in the instructors, myself and Officer Gaglowski, and the judges commented to us that this team acted as if they had been training for years together. Their teamwork was excellent, they knew what each other's pros and strengths and weaknesses were, and they worked great as a team. So, I would just love to congratulate my team right here. Good job, guys.
I'm also going to thank a few people, but also explain a little bit more about the exploring program, just very briefly. I'd like to thank village administrator John Lobato and the village board, Chief Gunther, the alumni association, and the parents of our explorers, not only the ones here tonight but our other explorers that are a part of the group. I would like to thank them for their support for the program. Program is actually run by the Boy Scouts of America as part of their Learning for Life, getting kids that are ages 14 to 20 an opportunity to work in a field with the professionals in that field to kind of learn maybe a career that they might be interested in as they are growing up, you know, making decisions about college and, you know, a career after that. So, I know our fire department also has an explorer post, so they are teaching some kids in our community, you know, possibly could work in our community one day. Our program, I've been with the explorer program about nine years and it has grown immensely and we've worked on several different trainings and gotten guest speakers from all over the county and the state to come and teach our kids. Some of the successes over the past few years, not only winning some trophies, we've actually had some of our explorers move on into federal agencies, Border Patrol, several police officers throughout, not only the state, but other states as well, actually another country, and several CSOs and dispatchers. So, the program does work and we are very appreciative of the village's support to help the kids of our community learning a career that they might get into one day. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like Chief Sashco to take over this. This is the time we're going to acknowledge the promotion of Lieutenant William, William Lark to the appointed rank of Battalion Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board and Staff. Lieutenant Lark, if you can step forward with your wife, Roe, who's joining in tonight, give you a little background on this. We said goodbye to a 37-year veteran Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley just a couple of weekends ago where we had our walkout ceremony on July 19th. And as in the board packet, it explains the rigorous testing that Bill has gone through, really, since the beginning part of this year, competing for this position. It's really exciting for us to be able to write another chapter in the history of the Fire Department. Bill's a 24-year veteran of the department. He's been the director of our dive rescue operations for many years, as well as our self-contained breathing apparatus program, which is critically important to firefighter safety. And really, for me, kind of exciting because in the tenure that I've been here, this is the second time I've had the opportunity to promote Bill. He was promoted lieutenant just shortly after I arrived as the fire chief. So, we're excited tonight to have this take place and, again, it's a new start for Bill in his career and he's really shown his leadership capability and skills. So, I would ask if Clerk Timmerman could swear him in and then Roe will pin his badge on him.
Do you, William Lark, having been appointed to the position of Battalion Chief, Shift Commander in the Village of Mundaline Fire Department, solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the said position? Do you hereby dedicate yourself to the highest quality of safety services, including fire prevention, emergency... prevention, emergency response, and community service? Do you pledge to be completely honest in word and deed and to uphold additions and goals, rules and regulations, and the standards and policies of the Fire Department and the Village of Mundaline? To this one answer, I will. Will you at all times uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws and ordinances of the Village of Mundaline faithfully protecting lives and property as you discharge the duties of Battalion Chief/Shift Commander to the best and more good.
While Roe is pinning on his badge, the cheer from the crowd is Bill is Corvette expert, I guess, and he's got a lot of friends here. I said that for his friends from HP Performance in town here. There's a lot of the group from that, that he hangs out with at HP is here, so welcome. Underneath that, Bill is the refinance of my house, just wanted to let you know. And then also while Bill is signing that, I'd like to just bring up really quick Lieutenant Jeremy Lockwood. As part of this transition, we had to promote a new lieutenant, and then replacement for Jeremy will occur hopefully within about the next four weeks. So Jeremy was promoted to the rank of lieutenant last Wednesday night by the Board of Fire and Police Commission, because that's under their auspices. So we're really excited for Jeremy and his family, and he and Kirsten, his wife, just celebrated the birth of their daughter, Lila Claire, just this past Friday. So congratulations to them, too.
Next, we have a proclamation. There we go. This is a proclamation proclaiming August 3rd through 9th, 2014, as National Farmers' Market Week. Whereas the Mundaline Farmers' Market is one of 357 farmers' markets operating in the state of Illinois, and whereas the Mundaline Farmers' Market operated by Mundaline Community Connection is a member of the Illinois Department of Agriculture's Where Fresh Is marketing campaign that promotes locally grown and marketed foods, and whereas farmers' markets are important outlets for agricultural producers that provide increased marketing opportunities for farmers, and whereas thousands of farmers' markets across the country offer consumers fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthy products sold directly from the farm, and whereas farmers' markets play a key role in developing local and regional food systems that support the sustainability of family farms, promote community health and wellness, and provide opportunities for farmers and consumers to interact, and whereas the Mundaline Farmers' Market is an important promotional activity for our community, and whereas to further awareness of the Mundaline Market and of the many important contributions farmers and farmers' markets make to daily life in America now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and board of trustees of the Village of Mundaline that August 3rd through 9th is hereby designated, that it is National Farmers' Market Week. And the residents of Mundaline are encouraged to celebrate the benefits of farmers' markets and the beneficial production of our nation's farmers by supporting the Mundaline Farmers' Market. Very good. We have today, just want to acknowledge the manager of the Mundaline Farmers' Farmers' Market. We've had a wonderful season, we've moved it over here to the plaza here. We have Joanne Bednar here tonight. Joanne, could you just stand up and everyone give her a hand here? I hope everyone gets out there.
The whole team that helps with this market every single week. We have several volunteers. We have Terry Skreba from Mundaline Community Connection. Sybil is our, the president of Mundaline Community Connection. We have Alex here, who is one of our volunteers every week. Aurelia, she's our volunteer coordinator, we could not do it without her, she's the master at putting up tents. And then my daughter Emily and Bob, they're also there helping. Emily's actually one of the vendors this year. She also sings, so she'll be at the market in a couple of weeks. We have several special events, and I'll be quick. This Friday, it celebrates seniors. We have the musicians from Grand Dominion here in Mundaline, Musical Memories will be performing. We'll be having a market, FAG giveaway. Then in a couple of weeks, we'll be celebrating National Farmers' Market Week. August 15th is Corn Fest. We will be roasting fresh corn from one of our vendors, and that is free from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, so everyone should try to come out, it'll be a great time. We have live music every week and free face painting for all the kids and balloons. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Okay, and our final presentation is another proclamation. This is for the National Night Out on August 5th. I won't read this particular one, suffice to say, this is a nice tradition we have in town. I think this is the, since they started it, what, 31 years ago? This is the 31st National Night Out. I don't know how many years we've had it in Mundaline, but it is well-established, it celebrates crime prevention, and it's over at Krakauer Park on August 5th. That's going to be on a Tuesday. And what time, Chief, what time, do you want to toss up a little bit about that?
Yeah, it starts a little bit later this, this year. They changed up the event, and there's going to actually be a community movie night there. So we've got a big 20-foot movie screen that will be showing, I think it's the Lego Movie is what we're showing. So it starts sometime around 7:00, and the movie will start a little bit after that, but there's a lot of activities on the front end, too, that the kids can do, and some face painting again, and there's even going to be some tie dyeing of shirts. So I warned the officers, it could be messy, but, so some new activities this year.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, no public hearings this evening. That takes us to the mayor's report. And it was mentioned earlier tonight, before I get going here, last, last board meeting, Mike Flynn was not present, so we didn't get to, in his presence, talk about the Community Days, but Mike is the liaison to the Community Days Commission. And once again, just an outstanding job and record crowds, record revenues brought in with the beer, and the music, I think, hit another, another level of quality. And so I just, if we could just recognize Mike Flynn for just doing an outstanding job, I call him Mr. Mundaline. First item on the mayor's report, I need a motion to pass an ordinance establishing the Village of Mundaline Community Development Department and appointing Victor Barrera as the director of the department. This is Exhibit 6.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan. As part of the discussion, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Libato to kick that off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, it seems like tonight is the night for promotions, and so it was appropriate tonight. This has been something that has been a long-term plan that we've had in terms of establishing the Community Development Department. It was a department back in 2005, which doesn't seem like that long ago, but it was quite a while ago. And Mr. Barrera has been with us now for almost 10 years, and he's been heading up 11 years. Thank you.
11 years.
11 years. Feels like 10. And, but Victor's done just an outstanding job in the economic development side of things, managing the Planning and Zoning Commission, and really, in most recent memory, putting together all of these new institutional documents that we often refer to, and it's the comprehensive plan, it's the master redevelopment plan, it's the zoning ordinance that's been rewritten, and it's the sign code. It's been Victor and his team that's been guiding that process, and so I think it just goes without saying that Mr. Barrera may be, make an excellent director to head up those activities in the future.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Voss, your light's on. Okay. Okay? Anyone else? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss? Yes. Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Victor, congratulations.
And I know I promised Mr. Barrera that I'd let him introduce his wife, and I didn't even notice his children are here, but his twins are out there, they've been very quiet.
Yeah, so in the audience, you have my wife Maria, my twin boys Adam and Ben.
All right. All right, Item B. Okay, this one, Tom Wmet resigned from the Police Statute Committee because he was appointed to another commission and felt that he needed to step down from this to afford time on the other. So Jeannie Brown is going to, if we approve, go to the Police Statute Committee. So I just need a motion to appoint Jeannie Brown to replace Tom Wmet, who resigned from the Police Statute Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, now on the next one, should I read this whole thing, and then we'll talk about the changes? Okay, here we go. I need a motion, this is Item C, to adopt a resolution reapproving the sublease as revised between Holly Partners LLC and Kovitz Schifrin Nesbit, Inc., covering 14,000 square feet of office space at 165 North Archer Avenue, Mundaline, Illinois; two, approving and authorizing the execution of the Fifth Amendment to agreement granting Holly Partners LLC the executive right to lease the property at 165 North Archer Avenue, Mundaline, Illinois; and three, approving and authorizing the execution of a management and leasing services agreement regarding the property at 165 North Archer Avenue, Mundaline, Illinois, Exhibit 7. So I need a motion and a second, if we could?
If I could, yeah, sure, that'd be fine. We can wait.
We can wait?
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Simple, second by Abernathy. And as discussion, Mr. Libato has a few items to cover here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd first like to just recognize some people in the audience. I know Mr. Nesbit is here from, I just refer to him as KSN, and then Dave Knopf from Holly Partners, and Rick Delil from Holly Partners is also here. So I'd first like to just start off by saying that everybody's been working very, very hard and long on this, putting this together. And it's not a simple matter of just putting a lease together, but it also involved a extension of, an agreement with Holly Partners for the use of the Anatole Building. And that has been, I think, gosh, probably in the last six months, so it's been a lot. So the good news is, is that we're here tonight. The bad news is, is that we've got a little bit more work on the language, what I would describe as some non-economic issues. And we would ask that the board on their motion, that, that motion include a conditioned-on final review and approval from our attorney and myself before we get to signing the documents. And that if there were, we expect that to get done quickly, but as you may know, Mr. Marino is out of the country, and so we were unable to work on some of this last-minute changes. And so we're asking the board to consider that tonight with those conditioned upon that. And that would include all actions of the board, essentially what's, the mayor, the mayor has just read, the resolution, the amendment, and the lease, or the management and leasing service agreement. So all three of those are all conditioned on us getting the final form of the lease put together.
So should they, sorry, should they amend that motion?
Yeah, I would ask. I'll modify my motion accordingly.
I'll mod, who motioned? Did I motion or you second?
I seconded your motion and you seconded.
Ray motioned. Okay. I'll modify my second.
Okay. Any other discussion questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, when does this law firm plan on moving in?
Well, I can, I can start that out as soon as possible, as, I think the answer, I know Mr. Nesbit is here and maybe, right? Yes.
You get ready, we'll be there.
Right.
We have nothing holding us back.
Right. We have taken a step to do the space plan right now. There's been an architect that's been engaged to do a space analysis, and then as soon as that's done and we understand what it is, then we'll engage the architect and get proposals on building out the space. And one of the things that is a provision in this agreement or in the lease is that that space may grow a little bit based on their final analysis, so.
So realistically?
I'd be happy if we were moving them in to celebrate New Year's.
I'd be very happy, but whatever. You can get it for Halloween. We're ready to move, we're excited.
Thank you.
Well, and we're excited about you guys coming and being part of our community. It's, it's.
Yeah, I, I think that it is something, you know, this is one of the things why we've been anxious to get this moving. It's, it's about bringing jobs downtown, and I know that's been the board's objective all along, and so this is a great first step. I know that Mr. Nesbit has taken a look at what we're doing, and he's, and likes what he sees and wants to see us do more, and we want to do more, and that's what we're going to be working on, so.
Yeah.
I haven't met many of you, but my name is Bob Nesbit. I'm one of the principals at Kovitz Schifrin Nesbit. And, well, I'm an attorney, so of course I'm going to take the opportunity to speak if you offer it, but I will keep it brief. I, I do want to say on behalf of my firm that the reason I'm here tonight is I wanted you to know that as far as we're concerned, we have a deal, and, and we're coming. And the language that we're talking about is, it really is just implementing into the agreement what's already been agreed to. And my partners are excited, we're excited to come to town. I've sat, for those of you who don't know, my area of practice is I represent kind of many homeowner associations, including many of the ones in this, in your town. And I've watched over the years as the downtowns of Chicago have been transformed along rail lines. And so I see what you're starting to do here, and I've seen it done in a number of other towns, a lot of other towns, and I believe it's doable, and we're excited to be a part of it, and looking forward to getting here, hopefully as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to trustee reports. Public Works Committee trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Victor, I don't suppose you noticed that with your promotion comes turning on and off the, the mic at the podium?
I'm starting to see that.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have one motion, and that would be a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement for license to install automatic meter-reading devices on existing structures, and that would be Exhibit PW-1.
Motion by Meyer.
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Mister Boucher, anything else for Public Works?
All right, then that would be all that I would have for tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Finance Committee trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. This evening, we have one motion, and that motion is to approve the payment of bills to AT&amp;T in the amount of $5,073.12, and I will make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
And this evening, on our omnibus list of motions, we have a motion to pay our bills. The total of these bills is $1,462,322.78. Some of the major items, an amount to Campanella and Sons for last year's street improvement project. This is the final payment, I believe. It's $170,516. This year's street improvement project is well along, and this payment will be made to Chicago Land Paving in the amount of $582,283. We have an item to Clark Baird and Smith, our labor attorney, $37,315.35 for one month. One month. Weston Solutions for the construction of the Village Hall, $169,141. And the last final and major amount is to SB Mundeline. This is for a sales tax incentive rebate agreement at Mundeline Crossings Development. This is an amount of $200,230.76. Unless anyone has a question or comment, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Public Safety Committee trustee Simple.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion here which will basically facilitate online donations for the Police Statute Committee. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a services agreement and payment processing application between the Village of Mundeline and SNAP Solutions LLC for online professing of donations to the Police Statute Committee, seen as Exhibit Public Safety-1 in your board packets this evening.
Second.
Motion by Simple, second by Boss. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on police, Chief Gunther, do you have any announcements? I know we have National Night Out coming up prior to our next board meeting.
Yeah, we talked about National Night Out, so I won't go over that again. As you just passed the motion for the Police Statute Committee, there is a charity golf outing Thursday. There are some slots left if anybody's interested. It's held at Countryside, and a portion of those, of that, those proceeds will go to the Police Statute Fund. You can sign up with either Phil Gilardi at Tavern on 60 and/or with Jen Marshall at the Police Department. And also, on the 31st, there is a softball game between the Police Department and the Fire Department. So clearly, we're going to have to give them a few points because of age, but, no, so it's going to be held at the Park District, at Community Park. And I think it's scheduled to start at 7:30?
8:30.
8:30?
I think it's 8:30.
Under the lights?
Under the lights.
Yep. So it's a star show. And then last, I would just say that school starts in just a few weeks, believe it or not. And we will be running several enforcement details throughout the school zones. We will be looking at things like speeding seatbelt usage as well as distracted driving. School starts the second week of August, and we will run those details all the way up to September 1st. So let everyone know. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Sashko, you have a golf outing coming up too. Did you pick that date as the same date as the, the big challenge? So all your guys are worn out, or?
No, the golf outing is on August 5th.
August 5th?
Yeah. For the record, though, I am the head umpire for the softball game, so I just had to throw it.
So Chief, you've got an outing coming up?
Yes, we have, the old Number One Committee has their golf outing to raise funds for old Number One's continued maintenance on the 5th of August at the Village Green. Starts at 8:00 in the morning, so they're still looking for players for that and donations. We also have just kind of an early announcement, a blood drive coming up on September the 2nd. I know it's a couple of meetings yet to go before that, but I always like to get that out to the public early. This is from 12 till 7, so this is going to be kind of in an off-hour format. And it's a, again, another difficult period with Labor Day weekend occurring. You don't get a lot of donations during that time. And we were extremely successful as I announced at the last meeting for the 4th of July blood drive. So hopefully everybody will come out for that. And it is eight weeks in separation, so everybody's available for that. And then last but not least, our tower ladder will be delivered here on August 15. Deputy Chief Light will go out and do the final inspection on that on August 11. And then it'll be shipped here, so we will have it that Friday.
Either Chief, any reason to call a Public Safety Committee meeting anytime in the near future?
I'm.
Any big expenditures coming up we need to know about in advance?
We will be bringing an ambulance forward to the board. I was going to do that on August 11, but now will be on August 25.
And you'll send some information out?
That, that will get out in advance, correct. That's a, was approved by the board in the budget process.
Another four-wheel-drive one like you did?
Yes, sir.
Last time, which worked out great?
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic. Thanks, Chiefs.
That's it? Okay. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee trustee Boss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion to authorize the village administrator, I'm going to make this motion and then we can talk about it, to sign an application for the Planning and Zoning Commission and Village Board to consider testament, text amendments to the zoning ordinance for pocket libraries as seen as Exhibit CEDC-1.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Meyer.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
These are, we saw pictures in our packet. These are little boxes that can go on people's front yards so that they can put books in, that people walking by can take a book and leave a book, to help share books. I know that I have a stack about this high on my nightstand that I'm always trading with friends, and this would just make it a more formal product. I know that trustee Kim was involved in bringing this forward, though she's not here tonight, so I'm filling in, but I think it's a great idea. I am probably at the library every week, and wouldn't it be great to be able to do a little sharing in the neighborhood? So, does anybody have any questions?
So these would be on the people's property, not on village, not on the easement?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, this is something I read about a couple of years ago in the newspaper and was always going to do it, and never was going to even ask for permission to do it. I was just going to do it. So I was not aware that it needed anything formally to be done, and so I'm glad that we are formally doing something, and then I'll get around to doing it.
Very good.
Good, so we have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Yes, trustee Sullivan.
Can you turn on your mic?
Is, red light was on, but not that one. Okay. Are we going to have some type of standards in regards to locating these? Distance from a driveway, or distance from a sidewalk? Or how's, how's that going to work?
It's probably more for Mr. Burr.
That's something that we're going to be working on, and we're going to be presenting to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So that's going to be developed, those?
Right now, we're developing the research and putting it all together to present to the Planning and Zoning Commission here soon.
Okay.
And that actually reminded me of one of the things that I wanted to bring up. I would hopefully wish that we would consider the ability to do this without a permit. So in your discussions, you know, try and keep that in mind, that I think a permit would be kind of burdensome for this kind of activity.
I kind of agree with you. I, Robin, about not having a permit, but maybe something so that they come in and, so we can somehow maybe get to the library or somewhere, put on our website where these are located, so that residents will know who in their neighborhood might have one if they're looking for it. I, maybe get a permit but not have to pay.
Don, you register on free, you know, freelibrary.org.
Okay.
There's registration, there's websites that you can go to and say, hey, I have one of these, this is where it's located. It's not through the public library system.
I, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't know, but maybe there's some way we could have just a little blurb on our website where these, since we're going to have an ordinance on it, maybe we have something on our website that shows where the free libraries are in town.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would.
Thought.
Just comment on the permit thing. It would be difficult to put regulations on it because, and not have them go through some process of approval. These things are going to be larger than a mailbox. There's no permit, for example, to put up a mailbox, but, I mean, they're relatively, you know, straightforward on what it is. But these are going to be larger than that. And there's going to be setback distances. You know, we don't want them building a shed in the front yard, for example. There's going to be some basic regulations on size, types of material to use, those types of regulations. So there has to be some process. I mean, we can look at the, the permit fee. I mean, there isn't going to be a lot of these, I suspect, you know, relatively speaking, all the permits that we issue. So we can keep the permit fee down, but I think there has to be some process to ensure that somebody doesn't construct something, and then we get a phone call that says, hey, you didn't do it right, and they have to take it down, and that becomes its own issue.
Yeah, there are all kinds of building models of how to build them, and they're really not all that large. And there's already several in town that.
Sure.
Are, are out there. I mean, they're really not that much larger than a mailbox, and they're on a pedestal, so I don't think we're talking shed.
So, that's one of the questions that I had, because all the examples that we have, they're all on a post. But, I don't know, it seems like, why can't you put it on a weigh-in and wheel it in and out? I'm.
All things.
They can sing, consider.
I think all things that the planning commission will consider.
Yeah, they're basically designed as permanent structures, that you put them in a ground on a post and you leave it there year-round. Let me know when the meeting is. I'd love to attend.
I will, we will.
Just as a little background, a neighbor of mine brought this to me and related her experience where she was traveling and was just thrilled with it. And then I said, well, and I put it over to, and I said, well, you should, you know, get in touch with, this sounds like something Holly Kim would really like to pursue. Well, Holly did pursue it with her and did a lot of the legwork. I did speak with Scott Davis, and I would anticipate, he's the director of the Fremont Public Library, I would anticipate him, he said he could perhaps make it to the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting about this and then weigh in. He, I just wanted to get him to sign off on it. And he checked with the friends of the library, and he anticipates that the friends would kind of coordinate with folks on this, maybe on the networking, maybe on the map, something like that. But Holly did some legwork. I would hope that Mr. Davis appears with the Plan and Zoning, and then when we, we can, you know, visit when they come back there. Okay?
Can I continue on?
Continue while I re-put in my password.
Um, so I have several businesses that open. We have Jeanette Studio at 326. Oh, sorry? Sorry, well, then you want to.
Yeah, we need to, please call the roll on that.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Okay, now, Jeanette Studio opened at 326 North Seymour. It's a full hair salon, also doing manicures and pedicures and facials. We also have Hotel on, at 517 East Route 83 that has gone through several name changes and has now just been renamed Baymont Inn and Suites. Galitech Computer Repair at 326 North Seymour. We have Cube Smart, which is a self-storage warehouse at 1080 South Butterfield Road. CrossFit that we're on Washington Boulevard that we're doing a ribbon cutting for. And a whole bunch more that I didn't get a chance to read at last, at the last meeting. So again, I think we post those on our website, and people can go to our website and look at them. We encourage them to shop local. I'm trying to see if there's anything else that we need. We already talked about the farmer's market, the golf outing, the fire truck outing. I think that's it.
Very good. Next, Communication and Marketing Committee. Trustee Kim's not here. Trustee Boss.
I'm not aware of anything to report for that committee.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee trustee Abernathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to remove number one from the agenda items at this time.
Maybe we should do that by a motion.
Uh-huh.
Okay. So make a motion to withdraw number, item number one on the agenda.
Okay. Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Boss. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, number two, I would like to make a motion for the, to accept all bids, all submitted bids for the Route 60 Water Main Replacement Project as seen in Exhibit TNI-2.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Boss. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, oh, I hit a button. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract to Pertano Construction Company, Inc., for the Route 60 Water Main Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Meyer. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Okay, and I'd also like to make a motion to authorize the mayor and village clerk to execute a contract with Pertano Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $1,038,561.10, subject to the receipt of required bonding and insurance.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what's the difference between motion B and motion C? You award a contract, and it's got to be signed by the mayor and village clerk, isn't it? Is there something different about those two motions that I'm missing?
We've probably been advised to do it that way by our attorney, and.
All right, fine.
But I'll find, I'll find out.
They're not, they're not in conflict by any means.
I don't think so.
All right, good.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and lastly, I have a motion to approve and authorize the village clerk's signature on a resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code appropriating 1.5 million in motor fuel tax revenue to be utilized for the fiscal year and 2016 Street and Infrastructure Improvement Project as seen in Exhibit, Exhibit TNI-3.
Second.
Excuse me a minute. I, I didn't realize, but this one, I think, is also tied to the first one that we pulled off, to look at the scope. So we should probably, yeah, we didn't tell you that one. But I think we should make a motion to pull that off, because one and three are tied together. So it should be.
If they can withdraw their motions.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so I'd like to withdraw the motion I just made.
And withdraw my second.
And make a motion to withdraw it from the agenda.
And I'd like to make a motion to withdraw item number three from the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim? Ah, sorry about that. Meyer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, anything to report, Mr. Boucher? How's our street program for this year finishing up?
Getting closer. Should be wrapped up before, hopefully before school starts. And then we'll have restoration to be completed then, once the cooler weather prevails. to be completed then, once the cooler weather prevails, or later in September.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you a question and gonna throw you off a little bit here for a second, sorry. Just wondering, how are we doing on the tree replacement? I know that should've been covered under a different, but someone was asking me, the tree replacement for the ash bores?
Removals continue throughout the summer, but as with restoration of the street projects, we won't see any trees put in the ground until October.
Okay. Great, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Other reports, um, let's see, this is concerning the retaining walls. Okay, I need a motion under other reports, a motion to authorize the village administrator to sign a contract with Rossborough Partners, Inc., in the amount of $69,933.92, Exhibit OTR-1.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Simple, second by Sullivan. Discussion? Or if I could, yeah, just go for it here. Discussion?
Um.
Yes.
We're being asked to accept the highest bid on this motion versus the lowest bid? Do you wanna speak to that a little bit?
Sure, I can start that off. I know that Mr. Schupkegel and Mr. Boucher was involved in the discussions with this and getting this information put together, but the reason that we're selecting the higher bid is because of, we have experience with, uh, this vendor, because he currently does all of our maintenance for the village, so he has a little bit unique that he has, he's bonded with us and is also able to meet our timeline. We wanna have these retaining walls. If you notice, the west side of the village hall is not complete, and because it's all, starts with the retaining walls. So, we have retaining walls to build on the, on the, uh, the south side and on the north side of the building, and so that's holding up all of the finishing of the sod and everything on the west side of the building. So, they're able to meet our timelines. We have, uh, a history with them, so their quality of their work is, we prefer, and have a high level of confidence that they will get done. We have lower confidence in the low bid, that they will, A, meet the timeline, B, the quality of the work, they've admitted, that they have not done wall systems of this size, and, and so, we've also had conversations with Weston, who is comfortable with it, but, uh, lastly, I would add that there are additional work in the 69,000. One of the design things that we realized, once it was done, is that these downspouts are a problem on the, on the west side of the building. So, this work, the 69,000 includes additional work to tie in all the downspouts, to manage the stormwater off the roof. In there, we're sodding the west side of the building and not hydroseeding it, so there's a little bit more cost there that wasn't in Garcia's proposal. So, there's a little bit more work, but there's also the quality issue and the timeline issue.
Can I just ask, did we not have a local company that could've done this?
The problem is prevailing wage. It's been, that's part of the delay. We can't find anybody that's, we did have a local guy, but then when he found out it was prevailing wage, he backed out. They just don't pay prevailing wage, and this job is prevailing wage job.
Well, they don't like, they don't like the reporting and the record-keeping. I mean.
This guy was.
They can pay prevailing wage, which is 20 to 30 percent more than with a private job.
Right.
But then, they're sticking their neck out in regard to all the reporting that has to be done, and if they make a mistake, the penalties are severe.
Right.
Stay away from it. This is a $10 million building constructed by IBM or some private company, it'd be a seven and a half to eight million dollar building.
Right.
Right.
It's a travesty.
I agree with you, trustee Sullivan.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to the omnibus vote items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to announce a reminder that this is the last week, if you wanna be part of the village hall determination committee, to submit your applications, so those applications have to be submitted by the end of the month. My other request is, can we turn off the screensaver, because we're constantly trying to log back in?
You go to the control panel and the power options. I've done it myself, and we're working on it.
Okay, so they allow us, 'cause some.
You can do it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I know how, but I wasn't sure that we were administratively allowed to do it. Sometimes there are restrictions.
No, I got an email today telling me how, and I apparently didn't save the new settings somehow. I tried to bump it from four minutes to 45, and it didn't take, so, but I'm working on it, but yeah, you do, that's definitely how to do it. Any other reports? Any other trustees? Other reports? Items, okay? All right, that takes us to the omnibus vote items. There's, there are items A through F. Does any trustee wish to poll one or more of these items?
D.
Trustee Meyer, item D is in Delta, okay? Anyone else? Very good. Then I need a motion to pass items A, B, C, E, and F.
So moved.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to item D. Trustee Meyer?
Yeah, this is just my annual protest that we didn't, when we had the opportunity to renegotiate the contract, that we did not renegotiate the residential rates, and so this is my, again, annual protest, and I'll vote no.
And this is where I annually have you recall that you were on the negotiating team to negotiate the contract too, right?
And I was outvoted. I made that recommendation very often and very strongly, and, and here we are.
Would you like someone else to make that motion, then?
There you go.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the rate adjustment requested by Groot Industries, Inc., dated July 14th, 2014, to be effective October 1st, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Simple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to village staff reports. Village administrator, Mr. Lobato.
I just have two items, Mr. Mayor, and the first one is the motion to pass an ordinance, a many ordinance number 74-7-21, Chapter 10, an ordinance regulating traffic, and as the gentleman spoke earlier at the public commentary period, this is the parking ordinance for Archer. It simply retains the two-hour limit on parking from 8:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday, but adds to that, if you have a permit to park there, you can park there unrestricted for any length of time.
Okay.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Sullivan.
Is there a difference between the east and the west side of the street?
Uh, yes.
All right.
Parking on the west side is prohibited. You can only park on the east side.
Okay. There are parking, okay, all right, you're right. The parking spaces are on the east side.
East side, yes.
Thank, thank you.
Right.
Hydrants are on the west.
Got it. Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, I'm, uh, thank you. The second item I have is a motion that's requesting the mayor, authorize the mayor to sign the attached letter that's in your packet, and this is to Governor Quinn, but the essence of the letter is asking him to veto the proposed legislation that limits our fees that we can charge for connections to our utility systems, waterworks charges. We're not quite sure where this came from, but the way they indicated here, the connection fees to one-sixth of the user's estimated annual charges for the class of service, or two months, two months of user fees. That's not how we calculate that. We've put some information in there that over the last two years, in 2013, 14, we have collected approximately $185,000 in connection fees. As you know, these go towards the operation of our, maintaining our utility, and these sources of revenues help offset the rates that we charge. So, other revenues that we collect help support that system enterprise fund, and it helps us keep our rates down. But I will tell you that our connection fees are not, are reasonable and in line with what other municipalities are charging, so we believe at staff level that this is just bad legislation, and that the state of Illinois should not be involved in determining what our rate structure should be, that should be retained locally, and so we're asking for the board's permission for the mayor to, authorize the mayor to sign this letter and forward it on to Governor Quinn.
Can we get that motion?
That motion?
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Well, I will definitely sign it. It's amazing that things like this make it this far, and it wasn't filtered out, it's just unbelievable. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The follow-up question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we know, this is Senate Bill 3507. Is the Illinois Municipal League involved in, in this?
Right.
Anybody know this was?
Yeah, it, uh, maybe Mr. Boucher knows a little bit more, but I know they had it.
Yeah, from what I understand, it was part of a bill that was so unrelated to water that it slipped right through.
It did, it was not on anybody's radar screen.
Ultimately, IML did catch it, but it happened so late that this is the process they have to go through now.
Paragraph six on, on page 58 of the bill, yeah.
So, instead of lobbying at the senate level, now they have to go through a process by which they petition the governor not to.
The House signed this too. I'd be interested in how that vote took place.
Okay, did you have anything else?
I have no other report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next up, village attorney, Mr. Lawlizern. Thank you. Village clerk?
No report.
There's no need for an executive session. Any other business from any other trustee? Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the minutes from the last meeting, you'll see, there's a, a notation for the comments from the, some landowners on Butterfield Road, and I wanted to, uh, public discussion to the board is not supposed to be give and take, but I almost got there last week, last meeting, because I felt that these landowners were mistaken. They talked about the expense that they were going to have to bear. We're paying for that, and we're recovering recapture when and if someone wants to hook into it, and they're not forced to hook into it, is my understanding. Am I wrong?
Yes, that's, that's correct. At least, that's what we're operating under, but, uh, we had this discussion, and what we're planning to do is, uh, we have a, a cost estimate for the project itself without the land acquisition, and so what we plan to do is put together some information. I think I may have reported this in my report to the board, I'm not sure, can't remember, but we're going to come back to the board in some public meeting and talk about, excuse me, talk about other options for recapture. There's recapture, there's special assessment we could do, talk about whether or not the board feels there's a public benefit to this, and whether or not there'd be some drawdown on the, on the overall cost of that project. I think the board needs to have that discussion. We're gonna bring back some information about that, and then when the board gives us more specific direction on which way you want us to go, then we can put together some numbers, meet with the owners out there, and give them some idea that, you know, for example, this only kicks in when, if you want to connect, there could be a timeframe, but in no instance, longer than 10 years, could be five years. All of those types of things need to be kinda decided by the board before we take the next step.
Well, okay, yeah, they should, they need to understand that.